Thank you all for coming. I will start by opening the meeting and ask our clerk to please take roll call for the record.
Tracy Dany?
Here.
Lindsey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
The board?
Here.
Lewinsky?
Here.
Ms. Wallace?
Here. And I'm assuming that the Park District needs to do the same or you just do a verbal?
No. Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Gunstein?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Well, I'm here too.
Ms. Vega?
Here.
Mr. Rockberry?
He's not here.
I'm trying to make fun of him. I guess the first thing on our agenda is public comments. I don't know if anybody in the audience wants to make some comments before we get the actual meeting started. Go ahead, Terry.
Hey, thank you both groups for meeting together. This is really, really nice. I have a record of four seven. Also Director Badgley Casino Board for adopting the new bicycle. Already done, so please encourage this. Got a lot of good information. Everybody, you all are gonna have a lot on your plate. I'm just asking you, please do not forget the pedestrian. Edge a little bit, but we're a real important part of the quality of life here. One of the things that happened in the bike plan was that there were two community Zoom meetings. Reinforce moms very clear they want every effort. Hey, in both meetings, different moms. Totally. About that. One Westerfield's mom said that she insists on riding bikes with her kids to school because you can't. A woman, mother who lives pretty close to here, turn for her kids just across the street. Can be a bit of a challenge. Know we've got travel, but lights all the way down to. Tell you, two rides a path from here to shit. One of those intersections, there's gonna be a car cutting across the crosswalk. I'm thinking the slogan should be keep the crosswalks car free, which is a lot of work. Nice thing is we have a great bike run committee. So, there's good collaboration. Really came here to listen to you all.
All right. Thanks, Terry. Anyone else? Public comment? Alrighty then. So, I think the. Sorry. She's just talking to me. I think the origin of this meeting was at our strategic planning. And part of it started when we decided to move Bartlett Park off of our ownership. There was some discussion around the other parks that we own. And probably what's gonna happen to those, what you guys' plans are, what your forward thinking strategic plan is. So, that's kind of the gist of trying to get together. So, we aren't guessing. Because every year that this lead came up, I heard it same every year. What are we doing with this? What are we doing with this? What are we doing with this? So, we would just like to all get on the same page as far as what future plans we have for the other open spaces that the village owns. That's part of the agenda. So, with that, we're working together on how we collaborate now with things that we own and you guys maintain. And another big issue, and I probably had, I probably had five or maybe seven meetings with the Raiders, the Bartlett Little League, the travel teams over the last nine years, just wondering who's gonna start keep maintaining these facilities. So, it's a problem. And I hear it from some of the parents that travel other places for events where they say, oh, my gosh, you should see the facilities at XYZ versus what our kids are playing at Razeek or whatever. I don't know that much about it anymore because my kids are long past that. Razeek was beautiful and my kids played there. I'm not sure exactly what has happened to it. But that's kind of the gist of the meeting. So, how are we collaborating now?
Well, I thought I would turn it over to Christine and Dan to talk a little bit about how park property comes in through development and also an update on Terry's point, the bike plan and the bike paths that we're working on coming up.
Good.
So, whenever a new residential subdivision is coming into the village, one of our first things we tell the developer is they need to contact the Park District to see if the Park District is gonna require a land donation or if they're going to accept a cash in lieu of land donation. The Park District has their own strategic plan, so they typically meet with the developer at that point so that we make sure our plans and we're planning things together in a collaborative effort. They don't wanna approve a subdivision and then find out that the Park District wanted a park site incorporated into that. And as part of that, once the Park District has let us know, okay, there isn't a suitable location for it, then we give them an estimated bedroom count so they could figure out what their cash donation would be required of the developer. Village then collects the donation as part of each building permit and it is issued as part of our upfront fees. It's a process that we've had in place for years, very effective. As you know, recently in Grassland, that's one where they gave a complete land donation. There was no cash as part of that. That's why that's a larger park site than you see in some of the other neighborhoods. The Park District also is represented at our Bike and Run meeting, as Terry said, and they were stakeholders in the bike and pedestrian plan that we have with the village. I'll leave it to Dan and the bike path.
Ellie and Rena, we've worked quite fit with them on bike paths over the years from the pipeline bike path we did several years ago. Working with village crews now, doing some of the resurfacing of the bike. We're under design right now, South Bartlett, bike path from Piper or the library north up to the horse. And I believe the Park District is saying that they're looking at finish the stretch going south from Piper's down to Sterns. So, that'll be a nice, well-used path. So, we're always coordinating who to talk to when we need to remove a tree, if we want to save a tree. But, so we've worked quite a bit together on bike paths, snow plowing, who's doing what, that type of stuff. We also work on Tree Creek Restoration down by Francine.
Mary Ann Cordell.
We've been doing a restoration project there, trying to get it, get the side slopes restored and make it look with native planting. We're actually, another project, not with the Park District, but where you continue upstream of the creek or the neighborhood is, anyone's ever been over there, there's a big ravine through there, a lot of erosion going on. We're actually getting started. We just, the board just approved the contract for getting design started on that. So, always looking at restoration. We're also working at Lysberg with issue over there along the creek. We have coordinated. We work well together. I know like, we've got equipment that they don't have, I know we had to pump out the pond over by Apple Orchard. We're always communicating on different. Like when we did our transition to Lake Michigan water, we had to tear up Apple Orchard and go through Villa Olivia and we had a great working. For everything back.
Good. I remember bringing my kids to Eastview, walking along that path, and it was almost a lake back there. Or not Eastview, Centennial. You had to walk that path in the back.
Yep.
That's just a swamp.
Part of that is designed to fill up.
Yeah.
But that's kind of the thought is, got another section, hopefully this spring, summer, to head, continue east on that park, then the creek heads south down the Sterns. Goal is to continue to restore it all the way down to Burn Road. Out of those trees and that are just dead or, you know, it just needs to be cleaned up and restored. And then as we get that other section I was talking about between the houses and up to Lysberg, I mean, that whole creek.
Did there used to be a bridge across that creek? There used to be a bridge, I know, right across to the soccer fields because that was there when, when my kids were actually playing over there. And people would park in that cul-de-sac and then we'd rip the bridge out.
Oh, yeah, there's no bridge there. There is a bridge, well, you know, the bridge going to Centennial, there's that bridge.
But there's also a big concrete pillar.
There's a concrete weir that at some point was useful, but the creek went around.
Went around.
So, we're actually gonna be removing that.
Okay. Little fun fact, my kids used to ride, build boats and send them down that creek. Yeah. Good. So, that does how we are collaborating now, I believe, bike paths. Anything to add for the Park District on that?
The one thing, we do really work well with the village staff and we.
So, I do agree, the collaboration that Park District and the board, probably the best it's been in all the years that you guys have been around. The developers paying the fee or in lieu of putting a park in, it's a great thing that was installed a long time ago. Everybody I talked to says that Bartlett has the best parks because every subdivision has a different type of park that is well maintained. And I know you guys operate on a different budget than the village and you do a great job of maintaining the parks and everything that goes into. Would like a little bit of update on our DH Horton project and the collaboration between the Park District and the village as far as our underpass that we're going to see put in. As well as, I'd like to see where that bike path leads because number one thing I hear from all the people I talk to is bike path connectivity, not just within Bartlett, but connecting to Streamwood, connecting to St. Charles, connecting to West Chicago, so that they can get out along Route 59 and go from west part of the road to Sterns or go over or under 59. But not just go to the DH Horton subdivision. Where can we go from there? Is there an opportunity to put bike paths through our industrial park to get us to the next set of paths, to Munger Road?
Yeah.
We also have, we also have some requests from some of the people that I talk to, the Castle Creek, Villa Olivia subdivision. They really don't have a bike path that brings them to the Kohler Fields area or back around. And if you can get to the Kohler Fields, you can get through all the way to Munger Road through the, what is it, the DuPage, what's out there?
Through the State Park.
Yeah. So, I think it's, a couple of years ago, they added a path all the way to Kohler Fields to get in through the woods back there. I think it's important that we continue to work together for connectivity. I really do. I think more and more people are counting on it and more and more kids are at risk if there's not a path. I just witnessed about 10 people in the last week walking down 59. I think it's pretty dangerous. But they wanna go to McDonald's and they wanna go to a store over there. So, in addition to the DH Horton update.
Let me take them in reverse order. Dan, talk about the connections in the, in the business park and then we'll throw it over to Christine for DL.
We have quite a bit of like, Mr. Creek Business Park, we just moved with the TIV, banding. So, looking at West Bartlett and Munger, right now, there's not a pedestrian crossing at that intersection, crossing west to cross Munger. So, as part of that, one of the projects is gonna be a crossing to make that connection to the path. The issue why it hasn't happened is.
Where's that at?
This is right at Munger and West Bartlett.
Yeah, okay.
Naperville Road.
When you look at it from above, it looks like, well, why don't you just make a connection to the road at the west end and put some stripes on the pavement? But there's ADA requirements and the slopes don't work out. So, they're actually gonna have to cut out some of that pavement in order to make it work. But that's in, in design right now. It's actually in for permits right now. Go south.
Can't actually even, you can't even get to that path. I tried that route once because I could see the path. I couldn't get to it. I'm like, that'll be good.
Now, we had the Mr. Creek building along the pond, the wetland area. It will continue, you can see it there on the west side of the road there.
Yeah.
That's gonna continue all the way down to Sterns.
When?
It depends on permitting, but hopefully this summer. That's in for permit right now as well. So, that would be all the way down to Sterns. I understand that DuPage County just did a RFP for engineering to include a bike path on Sterns from Munger all the way to the State Park. But colored project though. That'll be a huge connection. We're also redoing the paths within the business park because it's been quite a while since those paths were built. So, those are gonna get resurfaced. Then, do you wanna go up to Grasslands? There's gonna be a connection on the east property, so the northeast corner of 59 and West Bartlett. And right at that driveway, I don't, right there, there'll be a path connected, crossing West Bartlett there, connecting into the path on the south side.
That's a cross from Maryville?
Yeah, very close to that, yep. And then it'll go north and up towards the tracks and then we're gonna go under Route 59 Bridge.
Through that forest?
Through the forest.
Right along the golf course?
No, I'll stay south of the tracks.
Okay.
South person's on the other side of the track.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that property is going to the Park District. So, then it'll be a path under, and that's in for, right now, there's a concept that's been sent to IDOT, we're waiting for review comments. But if you look at, if you're driving on, north on Route 59, under Lake Street, look to the right on the east side.
They've been working on it.
Same concept, they, you have that embankment wall that slopes down from the bridge, they just cut it out, put in a bike path. That's the same concept that we're looking to do under the, there it is. That same concept, you'll have the tracks, the columns, and then a bike path. It'll likely require fencing all along the tracks. And then it'll run along south of the tracks, head west all the way out to Naperville Road. Just got the Metro easement agreement that'll be coming to the board in April to get the pedestrian crossing across the tracks on Naperville. Working with DH Horton on that because they're responsible to install the bike path for all that. So, they'll, that'll have the crossings, the pet crossing gates and all that stuff. Grasslands Phase Two, which is the townhouses north of the tracks on the east side of Naperville, is required to build the bike path across their property. It'll go all the way up to Spalding. So, that, that will connect the area, kind of Villa Olivia area and all that, will get a connection because there will be a path along Naperville all the way to West Bartlett.
On the, which side of the street, east or west?
It'll be on the east side of Naperville.
On the east side of Naperville to catch up to the corner there by Liberty Elementary you're talking about? Okay, that's.
But you won't have to cross 59 because we'll have the path.
Path underneath. Yeah, that's great, okay.
Who's in charge of the mapping so you know that all these connections are there? Like where would I go to be like?
There's a map based on our bike plan that we put together. There's a map that shows existing paths and then goals.
So, the village.
And plans for future extensions. So, we will update as those paths, like the ones I talked about on Munger and all that, as we get them installed, we'll put them as existing paths.
So, the village has a map? So, like what if I was trying to get a route from like here to Wisconsin? Because I, one person I know who bikes a lot said that Bartlett's the only place they have trouble with, there's like a lag between him getting a path to take them all the way to Wisconsin.
I'm guessing the reason for that is because the plan that they're using is probably Kane County's, which is, we're, there's only so much of the village that's within Kane County, so it kind of stops. We give them as much of all of our GIS data on the plan, but they cut it off at a certain point.
Is there a plan to take the path that's gonna go under 59 and connect it to the path that actually stops on the other side of, at Lake Street, the other underpass that goes under Lake Street? Connectivity that way, along 59.
Right now, the hurdle we got right now is like on the, you're talking like West Bartlett getting up to Lake?
Yes. The connector, let's use, for example, to connect the Streamwood that direction going northbound.
Right now, you would have to go through, we have bike routing maps for the path that they did at Lake Street, you gotta kind of wind through. Ideally, if the, when IDOT redoes 59 Bridge, we would widen it out and have some type of pedestrian crossing there, but I don't, that's not.
You have to go on Bartlett Road or you have to go down Lake Street and then go to Park and you just have to travel locally in the residential. I've looked it up.
Are there plans for a crosswalk at Naperville going westbound over Naperville Road at the intersection of Naperville and Bartlett, West Bartlett Road?
It's gonna be on the Munger side of the street.
Northwest.
Northwest. There is not, well, when that develops, we would require it to get built.
We don't even own that yet.
The other thing I can add is, we just had a meeting with IDOT, they're improving the Shales Parkway and Lake Street intersection, and the extent of it goes all the way past Naperville. So, they're gonna be installing a bike path on the south side of Lake Street along that whole stretch, all the way to Empress. We'll have a bike path running from Lambert on the south side of Lake all the way through Naperville. I think it even continues.
It went to the frontage road.
To, to the horizon, basically, right? Those are all projects that are probably out a few years, but those are into work, I guess.
Dan, that was my question. What do you see in timeline on this?
Shales Parkway, they're in Phase One right now. It's like the concept plan, then they would go to Phase Two. I mean, you're, I don't even know if they have construction funded right now, but it's probably three to five years out, I'm guessing, at the earliest.
If we're gonna go under 59, we don't need an overpass then, right?
Correct.
Right. Well, it's pretty far north.
Up there, right. They would need one south.
Yeah, it's pretty far north.
They're gonna go under 59 east-west and then eventually go over 59 north-south. As you go north on 59, they did put a bike path along 59 on the east side of the street up there, I don't know what's, I don't know what.
Eighty-five.
Yeah, up there. So, it exists, it's just have it in different places, they're not connected.
That goes all the way down to.
Close to Baytree.
Baytree. So, that's the path where, that goes to Baytree and then we have bike route signage all along Baytree, all the way getting down to downtown.
Through the subdivision, you gotta go to the subdivision.
Down the road, on the street.
Right now, there's no overpass plan south of west part of the road.
There, in our bike plan, there is a concept at the Combin right away.
Correct.
So, north of Sterns, concept to overpass.
Was it Duncan Downs?
Yeah, I don't know, do you know who, I don't know who all this been to this, but if you take, I used to run it, I never took a bike out there, but the tunnel underneath 25, who funded that? That's beautiful.
That was a Kane County, state, I mean, that was a big project.
Yeah.
It was all part of the Sterns Road Bridge improvements and everything, so.
That's really nice.
Yeah, that's a nice project.
That's a good path and another good path is if you go south on Bartlett Road and then east on, and then you turn right before you get to Gerber, there's a path that goes, and that'll take you to that, is that part of Mallard's Lake down there?
South, south wind.
And, you know, kudos to Carol Stream, they have a great, they, and so you get to the end of that park and then you can cross the street Fair Oaks and they put a whole path in. I rode it to work when it wasn't a path and they put a path in and then you can take that up to North Avenue and like you're saying out there by the river, the same thing happens, you can turn right and go down this really big hill and then turn left and you go underneath the bridge, underneath North Avenue, along the DuPage. So, in Bartlett itself, it's a little sketchy and going west on Bartlett's difficult, going north, it doesn't connect to all that Cook County bike path that's in that Forest Reserve north on 59. But if you go south, you know, you can get to the Illinois Prairie Path, you can get to the Great Western Trail, you can, and because Carol Stream has a great, so that's, when I do a route, I don't really go through Bartlett and I don't go, I go south and I go through Carol Stream and then I come back up County Farm, that's how I, because that's where the paths are.
Is the issue with the overpass at the kind of right-of-way funding right now? I know it's in the plan, but.
Yeah, it's truly not funded.
I wonder what it costs Hannover Park to put that one in over on County Farm Road?
Bridge, I mean, by the.
That's nice, yeah.
It is a really nice bridge.
That bridge made it possible for pedestrians to walk or ride a bike all the way.
To the garbage dump.
Well, no.
Yes, it's very scenic over there by that garbage dump.
They go to the city of Chicago now without crossing County Farm Road.
Yeah, it's nice. Well, you can get all the way to that Mallard's Lake and then I go around that ring and then come back. You can do that too.
I know, I had to go pick up my kids after they were exhausted.
It is in the middle, once you're out there, you're out there, you know, you gotta make your way back, but yeah.
Hot in the summertime, too.
It's hot, yep.
Once the development, DH Horton is underway and completed, does the Park District take over those bike paths for maintenance? Does that work? I don't, I'm just, I don't know, you guys do? Well, it goes all through that whole.
Some of it will be the homeowner's.
Good. Enough bike path stuff? Any questions about bike path connectivity, any of that? Duperity duper. The next little item we have here is some common issues, so we're having a little bit of a discussion on Bartlett Park District's future plans. I'm not sure which person on the board would like to tackle that one, or Rita, or whoever.
Diana, Diana and I are gonna take.
Okay. So, this is kind of what stemmed this meeting was our discussion at our strategic planning and guesswork and, and trying to see if we could get something put together where we're all rowing the same way.
Yep. And so, because we know so many of your board are new, we thought we would start by letting you know who we are. So, we are a board of seven. We each have a six-year term. We are unpaid. We have 126 years total experience and we feel that's a really good mix of newer.
That's all that, right?
Yeah.
Let's be honest.
Ninety of it.
We have, no, we have commissioners from 2017, 2018, 2019, 1997, 1996, 2005, and 1983. So, I wanted to tell you that. We also. We also wanted to tell you our mission statement, because you may not have heard it. We create fun by providing the finest in parks programs and recreational facilities for our community. And our vision statement is we strive to create lasting memories for our community by enthusiastically responding to and serving the recreational, recreational and leisure needs. So we also wanted to share that, like you, we have a strategic plan. We redo that every three to five years. Our last one was in twenty twenty-one. We also do a community survey every ten years, last one twenty-fourteen. We also do a master plan every ten years, the last one twenty-fifteen. So all of our plans are gonna be needing to be updated in the next couple of years. And as part of the strategic plan, uh, the board took a parks tour to begin discussion on the future of certain parks. We have forty-three parks, which encompasses six hundred acres and thirty-six playgrounds.
Um, thank you. I think that's important to understand because I, actually, when I checked out, when I got on the Park District, I didn't realize how many parks and how much property Park District actually manages. A lot of people see Park District as, um, community center or soccer or, you know, and it's so much. We have an intergovernmental agreement out at the nature center between state and the county. You know, it's the building out there, uh, Villa Olivia, our golf course. Wanted to give you guys a little bit of idea of kind of our financials and. We have to be dream big, but we're kind of SIS about funding, we're limited within our financials. Our budget is roughly fifteen million dollars a year. About less than half of that comes from property tax. So something that's happened to us over the last couple of years is when you're not running programs, kids aren't playing soccer, your pool's not open. For almost two years, our budget was down by thirty. So as much as we have the strategic plan, I've been on the board six years. I was all excited when I got on the board that the park in my neighborhood was gonna get redone. And then COVID happened and us as a board, we decided that we can't build parks and do all the fun things. We, we really had to scale back. So we're trying to play catch-up now. I think we're, we're in the works. And we, we try to find, um, grant funding. I think you had mentioned. Part of a grant for community parks, which is right, the whole area by the community center, which is encompassing O'Brien Woods in there and kind of tightens to the bike path. The other thing that happened with COVID is we got no federal assistance. Any money that would have come to us extra to help was funded through the county, which was appreciated, but very minimal. So I think that's really it, that we, um, we have a schedule, um, as far as things we want to do, things we need to do. Unfortunately, this year we found, um, we did, um, an overall plan to kind of see, you know, some of those really not exciting things. We have to replace the HVAC system in some of our buildings, the dehumidifier at the pool, the heater at the pool. So we try to find a blend of mix of the needs plus the fun stuff. We have, uh, we have big ideas for once and we had all the money, we, we'd get it all done. But we're trying to come up with a plan to get those.
So, um, the questions, I guess, is, in lieu of reading your strategic plan, what might would be like the top couple of things that you would want to do next? Does any of it encompass, um, what we did at Bartlett, Bartlett Park, something similar to that? Where we've owned it forever and, um, it was controversial for us to give it, uh, give it away. And I don't, I don't agree with it. Um, but so what, what's next? What is the, what's the next big thing that you're, uh, that's on your horizon?
Something we probably get asked about probably.
Yeah. Synthetic fields.
True.
I would say Kohler Field.
They cost a million dollars a field.
That was part of when we were out, when the board went on a park tour this, um, last fall. We were looking at all a number of our parks saying, if we could afford to put in a turf field or two turf fields, where could they be located? And so that was a big part of our discussion because you're a whole community park, but you can't shoot fireworks off it and do this. So we were looking at different parks saying, all right, if we took this here, what would we give up here? So that's where we're really at. We're looking at all our parks and saying, what's next? What does the community want and what do we have to do to make it?
I'm gonna add, piggyback on that because I know that I'm very involved in the baseball organization. Well, the Raiders Football Organization, my kid plays. And I think some of the trustees here have kids that are in the sports program. Number one thing to be here is turf fields. It's not necessarily because it's just, they want turf. They don't want rainouts to cancel their sports programs. And we have a community that is so tight, there's not a place that you go into one business in this town that you won't see somebody that's in a sports organization. People don't wanna leave Bartlett, but because certain people think their kids are excellent baseball players or excellent football players, they choose to go to towns, shall remain, remain nameless, I won't mention towns, that have put a hundred percent of their efforts into their youth sports programs. Because they see that that keeps the community so tight and tighten it. And it keeps those kids and that money and everything that goes along with that in our town. And I think the turf field is a great idea. It's a step in the right direction to providing unlimited uses from soccer, football, baseball, whatever, whatever sports, pickleball, whatever is used on those fields. I think the number one concern, and has always been since I was on any of those boards, was every time it rains, lose traction. And we only have a short season in Illinois, right? We have maybe for lucky, May to September. And baseball is up to July and then August starts football. And I personally, as a board member here, I wanna keep as many people in this town. I want those kids to wanna raise their kids in this town because we dedicate a lot of what we do to the youth. And that turf field and sports complexes and constantly upgrading is a huge part of it. So just my own perspective is one of the biggest things I hear is.
The field, we're thinking about doing the turf at first, if you.
We haven't come to that conclusion.
We haven't made that.
Because it's gonna involve, it's gonna involve, if we pick this location, taking something out of it, how does that affect the whole thing? So we're just in the beginning stage.
Right, because the other, um, discussion is, um, before, uh, entertainment, we're looking for a place, so it's like, well, when we're out looking at the parks, we look, could something fit there? Well, would we have to change a parking lot? So when you have forty-three parks, your mind goes to a lot of different places. And then you're like, well, how does it work and how can we make it work? And then it comes, and how do we afford it all?
The funding.
Right, how do you afford it?
And I think besides what was educational to me, I think Kelly or Rita told me, oh, the field costs a million. What's their shelf life?
Like ten years, ten, twelve years.
Ten years.
And then you gotta.
Ten years.
Well, they're outside, outdoor ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So then it's like, okay.
Plus lights.
Maintenance.
And parking and maintenance.
Is there any type of, um, like if you were to have a part of your strategic plan saying, okay, we're gonna make a decision on this and this is how we're going to fund it? I don't know, I think you'd raise, you guys raised like seven hundred and fifty thousand for the park? For the, um, all-inclusive park? So is the foundation able to step in and, and create another plan? Because that took like six or seven years, didn't it?
It took quite a while, yeah.
Yeah.
Haven't, haven't approached that with them because we haven't figured it out yet.
Okay.
Raise the money for us, but you're not sure what for.
Well, everybody likes to give to that.
They're actually, they're funding our pickleball.
Yeah, they're funding seventy-five thousand dollars for our pickleball courts.
Good.
How much?
Seventy-five thousand. The foundation is donating our pickleball courts.
Is it possible?
One pickleball court?
Pickleball courts.
Seventy-five thousand.
Over, a little over that, actually.
Is it possible, has it ever been done where the Park District and the village collaborate for one grant that is combined? Where we can find a way to apply for a joint grant that would allow us to achieve this goal a little sooner? Instead of you asking for, let's call it three million, what if you requested a grant in conjunction with the village board to enhance a field? Let's call it Kohler, because there's a lot of ownership going on at Kohler, there's a lot of deals in the air, where we can apply and you apply and let's try to collaborate together to get one lump sum of money through a grant.
Can we talk about Oslid?
Yeah, our biggest one that we get money from is called Oslid. It's through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, space land acquisition, development grant. Unfortunately, with the, uh, they wouldn't give more money for two people. It would be, okay, we're asking for, um, six hundred thousand dollars.
That's the max.
Right, that would be the max. So for, um, example, Applewood Community Park, we got four hundred thousand dollars. But you have to have at least five elements. We have skate park, we have the bike path, we have a playground, we have a shelter, uh, we have learning pods. So they would say, we're not gonna fund one or two turf fields. Not enough elements for that.
How have other communities funded it? Is, um, Hannover Park, how did they redevelop the whole Barrington and Irving? Not through.
It wasn't a park district, it wasn't a park district.
Something from the village then.
Yeah.
Has anybody looked at the demographics going forward? Five, ten, and twenty-year demographics for the people that would use the turf field? Because aren't, aren't U forty-six numbers declining? So aren't those your numbers as well? So the K through twelve, aren't those numbers declining? Would those be the people that are using? Dan's age and stage, my kids are graduating college, his age and stage, it's all football, soccer, everything. But what are the numbers five, ten, and fifteen years from now?
Actually, we're, the, in the younger sports now. We go through, just like the school district, we go through, okay, they're going up, they're going down. And right now, uh, we have wait lists. We have for our summer camps, registration opened up the past, last week. And we already have waiting on for people. So we're seeing the boom that we didn't expect.
Is it cyclical?
Joe, I, I would say this, to your point, I agree with you that we've heard numerous times, U forty-six is declining. But what makes our numbers go up as a whole, our district and ours, is to offer something for people that are first-time homebuyers that have a kid. They say, you know what, I wanna go to a community that is dedicated to sports. I play football, I play baseball. So I think it's investment into the youth that's up and rising and, and coming up in age.
Well, then if you look at a million dollars just for the field, or if you're gonna get ten-year useful life, it's a hundred grand a year just for the turf, the lights and everything else. Another hundred grand, so we're looking at two million per field?
No, it wouldn't be that much.
So, one point five. So can you get that hundred and fifty grand a year through fees? Like how do you get that money back?
That's what, you wouldn't want just one field.
Right. So is it like the math workout where you get your money back?
Schaumburg, uh, Park District, they were the first ones who ever did it. And they put in a complex of eight fields. And they ran the numbers and they're like, really? They go, yeah, we're making money. Because they can charge a high fee because, like Dan said, even if it's raining that day, you're guaranteed to play and that's what people want. So they'll, they'll get a bunch of teams from out of town, come play, use the fields. And we have talked, you know, to the high school, hey, if you ever have a chance to put in a turf field, can we join you? So we've talked about outside things, but.
So what happens to piggyback on that, when those teams come in, thirteen, fourteen, twenty teams, whatever it is, for tournaments and activities, technically, most of them keep their money here in Bartlett. They shop, they eat, they drink. And it's good for our economy in Bartlett as a whole. So the replacement cost, Kelly, is not a million dollars though, after the infrastructure's put in for.
Well, you have to resurface, re-rubber, like with the.
So it's less than a million to redo.
It's a little bit less, but it's, it's again, it's depending on the use of it. So if you have to re-stitch it, re-line it, it, it varies, but it's almost, it's, it was interesting to see the limited useful life of it was only eight to ten years.
So what they do in Rosemont, if you've been to Entertainment District in Rosemont, they've got turf fields in the summer, it's a hockey rink in the winter. But we, we don't need to go down the hockey road, but they do concerts in the summertime. So maybe tie the, the band shell in with the turf and now you're killing two birds with one stone and you're, you're getting more income out of the, the turf field.
How much do they get for, for field? How can they be breaking even on something like that? Yeah.
Oh, because they got eight fields, yeah. And I mean, if you're charging, and I don't know what they're charging, but if they're charging fifty bucks an hour.
There's not an open slot from now until October, Schaumburg, for them to go in there and practice?
The thing, the thing about turf fields though is it's not just a Bartlett thing and that's why one field doesn't work. And the reason it works for Schaumburg, where they field, A, they have three times as many people in this town. So to me, I feel like we have to think about it in terms of, yes, as a community, what do we wanna offer in the community? But for us to make it financially viable, it has to be larger than just Bartlett. It's not gonna just be Bartlett people playing on the turf field. We're gonna, Hannover Park, you know, it's gonna be a lot of others, South Elgin, all the other, you know, probably tournaments. I'm sure that Schaumburg hosts them too. People, you know, from, you know, South Holland, Illinois, or, you know, it's a whole, right? You, you're building a complex that costs millions of dollars, you now have to attract whole geographic area, right? Which I don't think would be a problem, but the cost of building that complex, who in Bartlett gonna vote for that? No disrespect, but that's not what I've seen in the years I've lived here. If something costs money, people don't want it.
The one other thing that, climate change is real focus. How it's impacting, but how we can repair our fields to get them playable after, you know, a three-inch rainfall. Battling, so that's why so many places are now starting to go with that just because we're losing battle on maintaining the field with a week of solid rain. And then get three weeks of drought, then it rains again. Climate change, we track it every day in how it's impacting our. Very good at Villa Olivia because it's so warm. Now what happens? It starts raining, it'll rain the first three weeks of April last year, which then impacted all the sports that were scheduled to start. These are the things that we're looking at. So it's not just, you know, it's a great thing, but is it the next thing you have to do? Because of the weather.
A good vision for the future.
Yeah, I, I would just love to see a plan, um, and then, and then a cost of that plan and then see how the village, um, can work out a way to supplement whatever you guys are doing because it's best for the whole community, right?
Yep.
So once we get this plan down, um, you know, nobody thought we'd ever have lights in the stadium at Bartlett High School. Well, the booster said, yes, we are, so they put it out there.
That was not taxpayers.
Right, and naturally, we wouldn't have to have taxpayers' money.
The artificial turf at South Elgin was not taxpayers' money. That was a group of people who got, raised the money and.
That's what I'm talking about doing.
And we don't do that here anymore.
Can't, again, we have a lot of civic groups here that are willing to contribute or or pound the ground on our behalf, on your behalf.
Yeah, but a lot of those civic groups have the same people in there for twenty years. They're not joining the citizens.
But if we have a plan that people can wrap their heads around, um, it would include the funding mechanism, right? Some of it can come from grants, some of it can come from, um, public funds and some of it can come from foundations.
And at that time, that was baseball and football. So you see the part, and people were on both boards.
Well, and to speak to the history that Ted has, I mean, he's told us stories of side truck coming with the side and.
And, uh, people put it down on the whole, uh.
That's what their high school students did.
They, when, when that, when those baseball diamonds were put in and soccer fields also. And we had side trucks just dropping off. And people were laying sod as we were talking. I hadn't remembered which side went up.
I mean, we don't have that kind of commitment by...
And you're right, Ted, that was all donated. Baseball and football were not really sports anymore.
The sign, the Rosika Park was donated.
Yeah, the...
The cement work was donated, the building of that house was donated. And, and the football and baseball took care of the grounds, they cut the lawns. And still do, okay. They do, they still use it for fireworks.
I, you know, I'll touch a little bit on that, because I know we wanna talk about... Back, you know, it's gonna get used, whatever you build is gonna be sold out all the time, because it's not just baseball and football anymore. You have soccer's up and rising, lacrosse is up and rising, pickleball, anything you can use on that.
I don't think anyone would argue with you on that use. So what, the trick is the funding, the upfront funding, that's the... So what does it take to put together, like, how many fields we would want, like, what would make sense and where? And then figuring out how much is it and how to get the money?
When we did our, when we did our tour, we were scouting out parks where we could at least put two, because we thought the Kansas football won.
Are you talking about your size football fields?
Yeah.
That's good, that's part of the battle, right, is finding out where to ask. I'm quite confident that if we get the right planning place, we can find out how to fund it. We'll find out how to fund it.
We can work on people in town, these organizations, we give them a...
I would say survey the residents, so they feel like they have a voice in it. Give them the five, give them five things that you, on the wish list, and see what they feel is important. Dan feels that the fields are important, there might be a dozen other people that feel the same way.
Well, and that's why we do a community survey.
Yeah.
We have an outside group do it, so it can be totally...
But then if it does go to referendum, you can say, we're giving you what you asked for.
And that's how, that's why we've done the things we've done over the years, is because people said we wanna, and we're willing to pay for it. You know, we want a community center, we're willing to pay for it, but we don't want the, you know...
Better community.
So we think it's very important to constantly ask the community.
Say that, I agree with what's been... And we can look at it, and maybe it's something we could do. Same thing like, you know, you start something, the first year, there's obviously, and there's change. Second year, we're into this, we're, we're going to modify it because we've... Starting point. Again, and talk about that, if a type of plan were presented, either just is something that we could...
Oh, yeah, and, and I don't like just the generic survey, unfortunately, because it doesn't give a picture in somebody's mind of what this is going to look like. I think you gotta do the upfront stuff, like we did with the stadium, at Bartlett High School, we had the remnants, this is what it's gonna look like, lights, Friday night lights, the whole deal. And, um, and then have people get on board with that, so...
I'm sorry, the turf you're talking about, I'd never realized it was that expensive. But, you know, there's other people that I associate, you know, part of baseball and... I'll say the same thing, you can't predict three inches of rain, and you're done, you know? Have some type of plan, maybe we could kick it. You know what, Ted, we'll get the old guys, we'll volunteer, we'll get the...
Not too many people know this, but when they did Bartlett High School football field, the football players laid the sod. They all got together and laid the sod, yeah.
No, I didn't, but I'm so glad the meeting opened up with plans that are currently being worked on and that. Because I'd say that, one of the surveys I know we took over, um, the west side of Bartlett, had to be included in the town.
Yeah.
We built the community center on the east side, the two fire stations were on the, fire stations were on the east side. I mean, you go down, you know, Oak Street or Main Street, and there's what, a mile or half a mile to the edge of Bartlett? But the west side, they got fifty-nine. Their kids can't pedal their bicycles, because they won't let them, if they live out there to come to the community center, because they're costing fifty-nine. I, I think it's gonna be very good.
Yeah, and that, and just to reiterate that, that comes up at every one of our strategic planning meetings, is how, how do we connect the west side of Bartlett into the regular mainstream Bartlett? And some of it is we're going to be having events over there somehow, some way? Um, yeah. So, we wanna specifically talk about Rosika and Kohler.
And whatever other properties that they have, I think there was one other one, right?
Um, there's an easement with Ken Surf, all that we're working on that, but that'll be coming to you later. I have a question. I think in our community survey, there were some, um, several responses from people who said they didn't have children. And would there be potential for, for programs for people who were maybe a little bit older? Or maybe they're not older, but they don't have children? Because they, I believe the survey responses were that they don't come to National Night Out, because it seems like it's focused for children, some of the other events that we have, so have you all given any thought to...
We have programs. We run adult programs year round.
Yep.
Yes. We have lots of programs for adults, if they would, you know, if they wanna take a fitness class, or if they wanna take a painting class, ballroom dancing. We, we got a wide variety of programs for adults.
I know, there was, those were the comments.
Right, so just explaining, we do offer, and the one thing we don't offer is senior programming per se. Because the township folks do such an amazing job, we quit competing with them.
I mean, there's, there's a room that was dedicated for seniors, they have meetings, you know, I have a group on and that. But built the community center and, uh, bring township and...
Hanover Township.
And the township people, great, I mean, they got process for seniors, they got everything. So, I mean, we don't have that kind of walk-in drop-in.
And maybe Hanover Township can collaborate help too, when we have a plan. I mean, I don't know what their situation is as far as how they get funding.
Yeah, that's, just ask them to look over what we're trying to do, and what they can...
Renee, there's a lot of seniors at the community center during the day. Yeah, when I go to workout at like eight forty-five, there's, there are groups of people, so people ask for that, but are they getting up out of their chair and go, you know? No disrespect.
There is something there. How's, how's Villa Olivia doing?
Other than the snow season, that hurt us, but everything's going well.
Overall, good.
Well?
Talk about Kohler first?
I don't care, yeah, we can talk about Kohler and Rosika. I know that we've had discussions around both of those specifically. And Kohler's got a lot more hair on it than Rosika, I think.
Kohler's lease is ninety-nine years, so it's not a whole lot of urgency with Kohler. Um, you know, there's a lot, Renee and I were just talking about that today. You know, there is three different entities in the lease. There's the Little League, there's the Park District, and there's the Village, thirty-two acres. Um, that lease really kinda talks about Bartlett Village, build the fields, turn them over to the Park District, they maintain them, keep them in working order. Um, you know, we're in charge of the parking lot out there, the maintenance, yet, um, you know, specify that the Park District plowed it, I don't know why that... Built in winter. Um, so it's our newest agreement, it's from two thousand and two. Um, I think that was probably the last time we collaborated on a really big project. You know, that, that property, access to that property was largely part of the Valeville project as well. We worked with Bluff City to add to that site. They did a lot of the earth moving to build that, that, those, that those fields ready. Um, so there was a lot of people involved in that development, kind of like what you're talking about, lots of hands making that possible.
I remember that being torn up at one point because of drainage. Is that a village responsibility?
And you guys worked with, worked with the Park District down there.
We're always looking at drainage, I know, um...
You had six drainages.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, the pipes, I think, are probably being updated. Also irrigation system.
It needs to be done too. I think, um, football field is currently not being used by local organizations for football. One of the key components was, it struggles to drain, and when it rains, it's soaked, and it turns into a muddy mess. There's not a lot of things you can do with that. We, you know, in the Park District closes the field, even though football carries on through mud. Optimistic that we can maybe fix it, but it's a great field that's just sitting there hardly being used. I mean, there are cheer organizations, there's some lacrosse stuff on there at different times of the year, but it does have some significant issues there.
We were not bound in building that, correct? I just wanna say, if we had built it, we would have probably brought in some different types of landscape architects who know that kinda stuff better. So we're just, we just try and fix it.
We, we won't disagree with you on a number of these because...
A simple fix on that, for anybody that looks at it, increasing the crown in the middle of the field would help with the water drainage. However, when the water drains east, it drains to the visitor's side, what was the visitor's side, and it is a muddy nightmare, and all those people have to get in their cars. And they get in their cars, and they say, damn it, Bartlett's fields are awful, it's mud, and my car's a mess, and it just becomes a nightmare for them. So I look at that as, you know, our community getting blasted for something silly like that, but it does.
But at, but at the same time, there's, there's a huge cost to do that work, because we're doing that on our softball fields, one, two, and three. And so if there's not enough use, where would we put the money in there? So that, I understand what you're saying, but we gotta do with our limited resources, we're doing softball fields that are even in worse condition, heavily used. Because the drainage was wrong there when it was put in, so instead of, if it rains and it drains the outfield, it rains, it dries, drains to home plate, and plus everything. So those are our number one, two, and three priorities, so...
I get that.
Just making the case for Ted, once again.
Hey, and don't say we have a ninety-nine year, we have seven... How long?
You've been counting, sure.
I've been counting, I figured.
Does it take your shoes off, Ted?
I was gonna say, the only thing you can be sure is Ted will be here when that lease expires.
Ooh.
I, I would just like to see Kohler fields, the Kohler field, football field, brought up to the ability for us to lease use it. I feel like it's a dead piece of land that's not being used.
Might not be by football, because they're opting not to use it, and they can use it, so we are programing it.
Something to keep in mind, when the, the Park, the Park Board did our tour and we went out there, we did look at that, um, here, that's the existing football field as a potential for turf. Kinda not doable, because we are so landlocked there, we've got Route twenty-five to the west, and then the parking lot is a tight spot. Something else we have to think about when we're looking at places for turf, is the impact on parking in the area. And, you know, if we just sign a park, you know, we can't just put one over at Sunrise Park, that's in the middle of the neighborhood, you can't...
And then you invite, uh, four teams to play some stuff.
Yeah.
Overruled, you have an upper of the president.
Yeah, I think, there were times where the football, it almost go into that pond back there, when I was playing, my kids were playing there still.
Why wouldn't it go by DC? Since that, where there's gonna be fireworks.
Fortunately, you can't shoot off fireworks from...
Can't shoot fireworks?
It'll melt.
Oh, we can't shoot fireworks from there?
Oh, we'd have to have the fireworks somewhere else, yeah. We wouldn't be able to have them.
Looking at the overall Kohler plan that you guys are under, Park District, wouldn't it be a better area to put turf fields in? Move your softball field out of there to a different location, there is much parking. Kohler Field seems to have enough parking to accommodate that. Looking at it and thinking, that's a nice piece of land, it's already got a concession stand, it's got lights, I mean, modified into a field that's a little bit more feasible for turf. Without having to go through a whole infrastructure change, and then relocate those fields to a area. I'm just looking at the overall land.
So now we're moving, we're moving fields, we're building essentially three new softball fields, we're digging up fields. And now these two million dollar turf fields have now turned into, uh, three or four million.
So, so we, we talked about it too, and those are the challenges we face when we're saying, well, this works. Yeah, but then what are we doing with these?
And everything to sort of figure out where another, another field could go.
Yeah.
Walking down this line, that sideline, that sideline. You know, we did our tours, I did this, you know, on paper, I think that sounds like...
When you guys are looking at location possibilities, how much acreage do you need for three, two or three fields?
That I can't tell you.
Should I tell him my idea? My turf field idea? You wanna know my idea?
Yeah.
Do you think money's no object? Here you go, here's my idea. What was this, Shopey Park, isn't that the one? Backs up to Lake Street.
Eleven acres?
This is where...
In the Crest Motel.
Yes. And the Crest Motel, and the land next to the Crest Motel, and the land next to that, too.
Dividend team can rent it by the hour back there.
Oh, the Crest, that's what she said, she's like, we could have people stay overnight. No, the whole thing goes, so here's, so we own all the park behind the Crest Hotel.
Who owns it?
Oh, I don't know about the Crest Hotel, but the, but the, there's a whole park.
There's a natural area, there's a natural...
There's a whole park, so there's the, the little cul-de-sac with the rental buildings on it, right? And then all that dark area is like forest, and there's one little, little, uh, playground.
Which side, which side of the cul-de-sac?
Can you, can you bring that? So that's the playground that he has the little pointer on, and then there's a cul-de-sac. And then everything to the left between Independent School and the cul-de-sac, and then to the back of probably the, it probably ends at the cul-de-sac, right? The, the park that we have, the park land that we have.
Joey.
Eleven acres total, I'm trying to, eleven acres, figure out the property of how far back it goes, so...
It's on a weird angle, because we have to back up, so a part of that is wetland that can touch, yeah.
It's all weird because in...
The space there is wetland.
Well, it has to be reconfigured, but there's the Independent School, which is the U forty-six, and then there's the East View, right? Those are on the west side, and Lake Street's on the north side, and then on the east side is that cul-de-sac. And the lot at the end of the cul-de-sac at Park is for sale, the lot next to Park, um, or the cul-de-sac is for sale, that has a house. I think it, was that where the lady did the fortune telling or whatever, lady was there?
The one that across from Park is not for sale anymore. We got a, we got a concept plan on that.
So, and then there's the Crest Motel, which we all know is a lovely, lovely site that we'd love to keep in this town much longer. So I told, I think I told Paula, I was like, eminent domain, the Crest Motel, make the parking lot and the driveway go from Park, where there's already a light. And you come into the complex, and it uses that whole eleven acres we already have, and yes, you do have to reconfigure the wetlands. But I think the U forty-six will be on board with it too, and according to Jody, the neighborhood, that water gets on the street there too. So a lot of that needs to be addressed anyway, and that's where there's enough area to put two, maybe four fields. You start with just two, and so now if you wanna try and sell something to people in town, you figure out how much does it cost to buy all that land? How much does it cost to develop the parking lot and the whole structure? And you improve the whole space, because you have, all the way up to East View, they don't really use that either, because there's so much wetness back there, not much is happening.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a grand, glorious, large plan, but...
It is. Now you're talking a lot of money, right?
You can tell if you get money.
Yeah. So, so let's wrap a little bit here, we don't wanna have everybody here too late, but I, I like your plan, that's a really interesting...
Oh, no, it's brutal, but you gotta think big sometimes. Oh, no, it's brutal, but you gotta think big sometimes, really.
This is the kind of stuff that I think the village would love to do so we can get on board and, and get behind some of the, um, gap in the funding, right? Because it helps the whole entire village. So, uh, either through a foundation or through fundraisers or through the civic organizations, a combination of them all. If we can get, um, what we don't wanna get in you, you guys' lane with is the planning and the design of where these things should go. So that's kind of our ask, I would guess.
But we can assist in that.
Yeah, we can assist in that if you need.
Property.
Property.
Eminent domain.
So I think that's kind of where we're at, is, is trying to get, understand where the Park District is at and how we can collaborate together and create, um, the next best thing in Bartlett. That's the gist of it, right? Everybody's on the same page.
So, and I think it was asked, too, that it seems like the area north of B C C, I think their field, seven, eight, and nine, it's just to the north there, there's soccer and baseball, or softball fields there now. They're lighted, we did talk about that, cause we do already have parking there, it's pretty central. Um, I think that we've, uh, it, it seems like a big spot because there's soccer fields there. We don't think it's deep enough to go back. Put, um, full fields there.
Couldn't we move the fireworks, too, behind the memorial?
That's our, like, the least of our problems.
Oh.
Yeah. And it, it is a consideration, you know, we could go to the golf course, we could go, there's a number of places we can go. But you're moving the whole set.
Would, would you get, would you get like, um, it's really tough parking there, too. I remember going to games with my kids there and you, that place would be slammed if there's a soccer game and a softball game and everything going on. But is there, I mean, at risk of, um, offending any tree lovers out there, is it a possibility to clear out more land space? There's a ton of space there.
These fields are terrible.
So forest preserve.
Oh, is it bad?
Yeah, but it's.
Terrible.
Part of it's forest preserve.
Well, we can get a forest preserve on board. Get Al going. Al, we need another acre or two on the backside of this. Okay. But these are the kind of things I think we're kind of getting, um, um, off the left field a little bit cause we're trying to do the plan right now. But if, if we can maybe hear back from the Park District and figure out, you know, when you guys think you'll have some things down and what the cost would be, that would be a great ask for the village to see what we can do to help.
You said Kohler and the football field, but you didn't say anything about Rizika.
Rizika.
Is that a ninety-nine year lease as well, Paula?
No, that's coming up.
No, and the other player in, in Rizika is ComEd. And, and Christie, I know you and Dan have talked to ComEd about some of the challenges with, uh, us trying to fix the parking lot there and discovering that it's not in Bartlett.
It's a ComEd easement, the parking lot.
And it's under the county jurisdiction, right? So it gets a little tricky. And Dan, if you wanna talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so it is unincorporated. So in order to develop parking lot and build it, um, pretty much have to go through the. Us, we were able to get. Annex to the. Part of those discussions. Get them annexed, then it would go through the village process. Uh, mine is we wanna improve that parking lot so that it. Keep surface curved, drainage, lighting, all that stuff, but.
But is this, is it just the parking lot that's on the ComEd easement then?
Yeah. Yeah. We have, uh, an agreement with ComEd to have the parking there. We've talked to them and they don't, they don't have a problem with the concept of improving the parking lot. Just started talking to DuPage County and they said, well, you're gonna have to go through zoning and all that stuff because. Kind of like. Simple if we can annex the village and go through our process then the county. Trying to try to do that. Hanover Park, that same ComEd right away is actually in Hanover Park. So I don't, uh, initial indications is. Problem annexing, or why it, what the history is behind why it wasn't annexed at the time. Uh, but hopefully we'll be able to go through the process, uh, and annex that into the village. Is everything I'm hearing about going through the ComEd.
But one of the things that came up when we were discussing the parking lot was, you know, it's, it's a pretty hefty price tag on, on that. And is that really what we wanna do there? Is there something else that we'd like, you know, is there a better use for that park or a better configuration? Because if we're going to be, you know, putting the kinds of dollars into improving the parking lot, you know, maybe we should look at the whole park. And that gets us.
Yeah, looking at the whole park. Is there any? Go ahead, Paul.
No, go ahead, ma'am.
Are there any teams that play on the very big one in the north part of that, that field? All the fields in the summer are being used except for, there's a little one in between the, uh, northeast one and the one that borders the fence. There's a little one, we've, we've taken that out, there was T-ball field there. Oh, yeah, yeah. So during baseball season, this field is used all the time. All, all of the diamonds? All the diamonds. And then what happens is, R one is the big one right with the parking lot there. Yeah. That field is used for travel ball throughout the entire fall. And, and then Raiders come, come in and they put up their goalposts, which their, their field runs basically from the northeast corner to the north or to the southwest corner. They put up their goalposts and then we have a shared, uh, lease agreement with the Little League. And they pretty much utilize the outfield of R one and R two for practices. With, uh, stuff there. So, that field probably gets used more than anybody really sees it. You're, it's all the way up until October, November. In fact, we have a turkey, the Raiders have a turkey bowl that they do on Thanksgiving and that's the day that they basically take everything down. So. I think it's important to understand that the Little League has maintained that field, junction with the Raiders, since the inception of the lease. And for years, we had no problem affording to do that. Baseball was the, we were the number one Little League in the state of Illinois in, in, back in the day. And that place was the crown jewel to play baseball and you probably remember when your kids were there. COVID hit and it hit hard and it kind of like, we had to let something go. And, and field maintenance was one of the things that we had to kind of pull back on, just like the Park District got hit hard with, you know, enrollment. The Raiders, they assist from August until November. They cut their grass, they paint their lines, they clean up. We have a pretty decent relationship with them. It's gotten better over the last few years. I, I, John Bannerman's here, he's treasurer of the Raiders. So he understands the importance of all of us collaborating together. But we run those fields, rain or shine, you know, rain, shine, winter, snow, it, you know, things go on no matter what. Know that there's a Thor guard that's, uh, not properly working out there. I believe that's scheduled to get replaced. Everything that's out there, with the exception of a few repairs that, uh, the village has done, which is really minor and, and much appreciated. It was some rill scudders, stuff like that with concession stands. Um, we've collectively, both organization, I'm speaking on behalf of the Little League at this point. We've done everything out of our pocket on that.
The drainage is pretty good over there?
Huh?
The drainage is good over there?
Uh, the drainage could be better, it's not as bad as Kohler. John, you.
Yeah, one thing I'll say about Rizika. Service in a different way than just kind of. I were aerating. Act it as we're. Or compact the ground is. Does work really well.
So, use the crap out of the field. I know the discussion had come up with, with us during Bartlett Park of packaging all the parks together in the transfer of Bartlett Park. I think there's more hair on this one than just being able to do, kind of find a, an avenue that we as two organizations that use it and maintain it, not be squeezed out or not be taken off of, uh, ability to do what we need to do. Also with accommodating.
Well, just by hearing everything, I, I mean, it seems like Bartlett Park District really should be working with Raiders organization and Bartlett Little League. I mean, I don't think the village has, should be owning this property. This should be a function of the Park District.
Given to the village by U four and six.
Yeah.
Huge construction dumping ground. Man, and maybe it was. Had to be leveled off. Raiders and. That was big garbage. We got a grant from. I left, uh. Christie said, yeah, we had, um, beer at. Firebombers and we raffled off those fields to the Lions Club, Lions Club. We expected to receive about two or three. Ten thousand dollars for the big field. And I think the. One was four. And that's what I was talking about much earlier. And we got that done. Got Commonwealth Edison to give us that. What you deal with. That part of the easement, they wouldn't let us asphalt it. They asphalt it, too. He said, no, it can't be asphalted. Have to use crush stone and that was. It was the agreement. Commonwealth Edison, so. That, I'm, I'm so glad to hear the Raiders and, and. Yes. And for the board and I was trying at that time to get.
Well, your wish is coming true. You can have it.
Ted's finally out laughing.
I just don't feel it's a village function to be meddling in that. I think it's a Park District function and.
I, I told somebody in a. Serious, but either it's golf. She has it water.
Yeah, I say no, Marlin Hills is a wonderful place.
So, how do we achieve our goals, which is, I mean, it's.
To achieve greatness.
Huh?
Graciously beaded to us.
Well, I think the first thing we have to do is, uh, you have to find out if it can be annexed by the village. You have to work something out with the head.
Well, that's just the parking lot.
Yeah, that's just the parking lot.
Yeah.
That's the parking lot.
Which is, when I was there last, it's horrific. You could tear your car.
I don't, I'm telling what was insisting for that, I don't know what. But that, uh, building was built. On the easement by about six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it true, Dean?
The concession stand is.
You could get away with that kind of stuff back then, now.
Goes over a little bit on the Commonwealth.
At this point, though, that, to, to, sort of what Adams, uh, turned in, at this point, that piece of land that was donated to the village of Bartlett and turned into by volunteers, has not cost the village of Bartlett hardly anything in money. We really have, in, in twenty-five years, I bet you could go back, I may eat ten grand in some fencing and, I mean, I'm, I'm shooting a number out there, I could, it could be.
Basically, we're talking about two free parts. Kohler Fields. People, we, we had, uh, construction guys who. Equipment was loaned to us. They'd come out after work and they did that thing and take down. It was all done.
Uh, does the Park District want it?
We, we haven't made that decision.
Yeah, I don't think we.
Well, we, we just spent twenty-five grand in replacing the fence along the. Uh, property line, basically. Roll it over and. Every year. Some things out on the parking lot, throw.
Crap over there. And if I'm, if I'm hearing you, you're saying, Dan, you're saying it works. We need every component to stay there. We're using it, it works. Which is kind of saying to us, it, well, if you take it, you can't change anything.
It worked until financially it became a larger, uh, volunteer organization, you know.
Right, so I think. Think about it, cause it'd be like, well, you give it to us, but we can't change anything about it because we're gonna upset a lot of people.
I don't think that's gonna work.
And I, I can say when we were out there, the, how it was being maintained certainly was not up to our standards. And we looked at it, uh, I often thought was driving by. It's sort of embarrassing of, say it's great, I say.
Well, people think it's our park, people think it's our park.
And there, there's weeds in the dugouts, there's weeds everywhere. And so it wouldn't be something that we would say, oh, yeah, just maintain it as it is because Kelly and her department would be saying, this isn't our standard. So that, those are the things we would have to explore is what it would be. It'd be great to say, well, you're saying it here, Little League does it, but they can't keep doing it. So then it becomes, all right, what's the best for the community? And if you're saying, well, you, it's just gotta keep working and we're. Doesn't.
Well, I thought that was part of tonight's meeting is that, we, I thought we discussed at the strategic planning meeting that, that may not be the best blueprint, that may not be the best place for the parking lot. And collaboration with the Park District, there might be a better plan for that part.
I think we talked about putting the parking lot closer to the houses.
Right.
On the other side, moving the football field to where the parking lot.
Yeah. And when we toured that piece, Paul, Heather and Ted, this'd be a couple synthetic fields. So, I mean.
I think the decision wasn't one of the big. But maybe there is a lot going on there. So I guess to a degree, there has to be some flexibility, like some elements that you're using it for would probably stay, but some things would have to go, right? Whenever, I felt that way when my son played on Rizika, my son, my son's twenty-seven years old. So, that there's just so many fields, right? And then you put a football field in the middle, I don't think the Raiders were around back then, but if they were, they weren't, not if they were using it. But there's, so, yes, it, it could be Park District property, it could be maintained by the Park District. Would it stay? Five baseball, diamond, and a football field? Probably not. So that means then some people, games are gonna be played somewhere else, right?
Well, that comes back to the, okay, then we have to move those fields.
Well, we have other fields, though, right? Where we could host, those games could be hosted.
I don't think we have enough.
I, I go back to what are the demographics? What's the five, ten, and twenty-year forecast of those demographics? And what do towns our size have that are successful? So you can't compare.
So you can't compare us to Naperville, you can't compare us to Schaumburg.
And we can't, because we don't run Little League, and we don't find folks, so they're the only ones who could say what their numbers are.
Those guys always think they're the best anyways.
So that, that has to be part of the discussion, and the other part of the discussion with Little League is, okay, now, you're using fields out at Hanover Park, how many games are you really having out here versus what you have, how many are you having at Hanover Park, how many are you having at Kohler? Like, for us, we're taking out a T-ball field, there's not the use, we're putting in pickleball, so those are the things we're looking at, when we're looking at fields. So I, we, the Park District cannot answer the questions you're asking.
So I think.
That goes back to what Emily said.
Yeah, I think, I think that hits on the nail on the head, you guys are better to facilitate this conversation with Little League and the Raiders than the Village Board and the Village staff. I mean, Dan does a great job taking care of grass, but I don't think, you know, to that level, you know, so I, I.
I think the village does have to be involved, because Raiders and Little League could say, yes, take us, take us, please, please, and we're going to say, eh, we want their property that needs this much dollars and this much work, and you're just going to drop it on us?
Well, I think if you guys collaborate with Little League and the Raiders, formulate a plan, then let's talk. I, I mean, I'm, we're all open for discussion, I think, that's why we're having this meeting. And obviously, it's going to revolve around money.
Yeah.
And I think we're all open to that, I think, we just want those organizations to be taken care of, and I don't think the Village of Bartlett, as a whole, us, can do that. It has to be the Park District. The Park District has to be in this conversation, not just the village, so. Yeah, I agree with that, and I think that the village needs to take on more responsibility to get it up to the point, maintenance-wise, because it is our property, we should take the responsibility to get it up to a point, maintenance-wise, where it would be something that would be profitable for the Park District. That's, it's not dumping a piece of property that's been ignored for a long time onto the Park District, that's not fair at all.
Right.
But at some point, the village has to take responsibility to get some of the stuff cleaned up.
I think with the new fields at Hanover Park and the alliance that the Little League has, I'm just speaking for the Little League, they have a good alliance, we have a joint agreement with Hanover Park, that has provided, we absorbed the Little League of Hanover Park, and they just put in X amount of millions of dollars, put new fields in. We're meeting with the mayor and their director of public works to make sure that we have access to those fields. We had access to those fields, same type of contract that the Village of Bartlett has with Little League and Raiders, changes a few aspects of Razika. We can, we can modify that, you know, from the field, we can eliminate some fields, so there's not as much, some baseball field, so there's not as much maintenance out there. At the same time, maybe put a little bit in to fix the drainage, and maybe some of the parking lot can be redone, whether we can get it into the village, but we'll know more about that meeting in the next couple of weeks.
No, I'm ashamed to say it, I don't, does Hanover Park have a park, or is this part of the village?
No, they have a park district. Yeah, they have a park district, but it's not, they don't oversee the property.
They, they own, they lease the property from MWRD.
Right, it's the water reclamation.
Yeah, the Water Reclamation District. And then, the Village of Hanover Park received a matching grant, I don't know the amount, I don't know the particulars on it, they took a look, a look at it overall, they put their gaming money that they got, like we do, they matched it, they put millions of dollars, a pavilion in, or a stage, at the same time, they're going to be running music year after year, and they're putting concessions.
That, that brings up a really good point, too, if there's additional revenue streams for the village, maybe we could.
Redirect.
We could earmark that for cleaning up some of this stuff and getting it to the point where everybody's happy with the fields in Bartlett. I mean, that's the main goal here, right? So let's land the plane, any other final comments? I think I've got down in my notes that, you know, turf fields are obviously on the playing field, from the village's standpoint, correct me if I'm wrong, we would love to see, at some point, something from the Park District that says, hey, this is what we're planning on doing, and this is how Razika and/or Kohler could be involved, and this is, and then we can work backwards from there as far as how that might work.
Right.
Thank you for coming and sharing your budget and your parks and everything else with us, I think it's fantastic that we have more knowledge of it. Again, I'll reiterate the fact that as far as Razika and Kohler are concerned, I think the village needs to take on some more responsibility to get it to a maintenance level where it would actually be feasible for a Park District to run. That's my opinion.
And take it over at that point.
Yeah, so.
So how do we keep communicating? Is that Rita talking to Paula?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Paul and I can't, talking, and then we.
I should exchange.
Right. Yeah, and it, I mean, it's just.
Rita will have our staff continue to, like, if what parts we can move and what works.
I mean, I don't want to, you know, diminish the fact, you know, we have a huge project with grasslands and that connection, and those, you know, getting those path fills and that, so, you know, we have some really big, exciting projects on the cusp of, you know, we've talked about those connections east-west for a very, very long time, and we're finally getting, you know, a plan to do it, so, you know, we're moving in that direction.
Yeah, I think it was a good, good thing to get together, I know it's, I think back before I was even mayor, I think that there was some real rifts between the Park District and the village, and there were some lawsuits going on, Ted was suing us. But I'm glad that we can get together, because I think it's important, I think our, our common goal is to, like trustee Gunstein said, is to have people, when they come into town for any type of an event, I don't care if it's pickleball from seniors or whatever, youth sports, that they're seeing fields that they, we can be proud of, and they're seeing facilities we can be proud of. And I love the fact that you reiterated what your standards are, because I think that every time I went to a Park District field, I think they are spectacular. So let's keep working that way, and get updates with the staff, to staff, and then when you guys, or when the Park District does have some plans, some grand master plan, you can actually put on the, the big hairy audacious plan is one of them, and then maybe some more realistic ones, we can see how we can come up alongside you and make some of these land things work.
Wish there was a piece of land that was not buildable for a building that we could take or buy for a dollar, honestly, and turn it over to, like, behind Home Depot on 59, and really develop that into a sports complex.
Sports complex, that should be really on our, on, hopefully on the Park District's horizon, but I know some villages fund theirs, too.
They do.
Yeah.
The Crest Hotel.
Telling you, Eminem domain, Lake Street, baby.
You've got senior clubs off Lake Street.
Not a bad idea, yeah.
How big is the Crest Hotel?
Unincorporated.
That's okay.
No, I think the village is operating.
Christie, you know how big it is?
When was the last time, did you ask the manager the last time you stayed?
That's how many he wanted, like, $4 million for that, I'm like, oh, it's so funny.
Wow, we almost got a hotel for 20 million, so that'd be a.
Ooh, the house, the place next door is for stuff for 700,000, now you said you think that's already.
There's some plans for some, some, it's not really that big, it's not a big footprint. But along Lake Street, I would agree, there's, there's a lot of empty space along there, especially like, right behind Tom's.
And behind East View, I mean, they even use half of that.
Yeah, they don't, and they are not very, very friendly when it comes to practicing on their fields, we had to pull teeth to practice on those fields back there.
There's nothing going on back there ever.
Can't use behind Home Depot, because that's a, they moved all the water over there, that's like, it's raining.
Parts of that, uh, parts of that, that's what the state owns on Lake is behind.
Yeah, yeah, we were just talking about that at strategic planning, too, when we were looking through maps, because part of it is still owned by the Tollway.
Does that come there?
They were going to put it through, are they going to put it through or no?
No.
But they still own it.
Yeah, that's, that'd be a good negotiation there, better use of, of land than just being empty. There's, there's, in that back area right there, it's all hooked up and ready to go for a housing complex.
Yeah, housing, yeah.
Yeah. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Gunstein. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Boo.
We are adjourned.